And we are live, thank you.
All right, good evening and welcome to the May eighth, twenty twenty four Special Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Adam Ragab, Vice Chair. Tonight's Hybrid Planning Commission, Commission Meeting is being brought to you by Zoom. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your microphones turned on for the roll call. Commissioner Accuse?
Present.
Commissioner Batazo?
Here.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Present.
Commissioner Goals has planned absence. Commissioner Rashish?
Here.
Vice Chair, I'm here. And Chair Murphy has also coordinated an absence ahead of time. For this meeting, we continue to utilize the Zoom platform. I will do my best to recognize you in the order in which hands are raised. After being recognized, you may then ask your question. Our first item of business is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. Deputy City Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the commission?
No, Vice Chair, I don't have anyone signed up. Thank you.
All right, then, we will move on to our first item of special business. And our first item of special business is to review and consider approving the minutes of the April seventeenth regular meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the minutes.
They moved.
Is there a sec? All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Rashish and a second by Commissioner Batazo to approve the minutes. Deputy City Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote. And Commissioners, please turn on your microphones.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Batazo?
Aye.
Commissioner Boatsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Gels, excuse me, Commissioner Gels is not present, so Commissioner Rashis?
I'm.
And Vice Chair Rue?
Epstein, I was not present at the meeting. So I think the second item of special business is the Planning Commission Agenda Bill PCB twenty-four dash zero nine Open Space Zone. And to talk to that, I'd like to welcome Jesse Bond, City Manager.
Hi, good evening. Is my audio okay? All right, thank you. I am joined this evening by a handful of staff. And Carson Hornsby will be helping me here by sharing the PowerPoint slide deck. We're going to keep it brief. Most of the information is in your packet, but I'll run through a few slides just setting the stage. And then I will be introducing our two chairs from the Parks Commission and the Trust. And they will take it from there. So Carson, let's go ahead and start the screen share. There we go. Next slide, please. So just going to start with a refresher on the background in case folks are watching and haven't been following this process closely. I'll briefly walk through the overview, provide an overview of the proposed open space zone. We'll talk about next steps and then we'll turn it back to you for discussion. Next slide, please. Planning Commission members, I'll just remind you that the City Council included in the scope of work for the comprehensive plan periodic update, the development of a new park zone. This was on our plate. We drafted a preliminary park zone and we presented it to the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission separately in January. We got some feedback that that it wasn't what was anticipated. I paused the legislative review and we went back to the Parks and Recreation Commission for for further review and discussion. That has been a really good process. Next slide, please. The Parks and Rec Commission held held an initial meeting to help scope the work. And they recommended that we developed, we do their work in two phases essentially. An open space zone and a second zone to address parks. And you might remember when we were at the Planning Commission originally, and I think the Parks Commission originally as well, we were really wrestling with the types of land in the park system and the the great variation from open space properties that are largely undeveloped to, you know, heavily developed parks like Luther Burbank. We had talked originally about a tiered approach. We ended up just recommending two separate zones. So this is part one. This is the open space zone. The park zone development comes next, and that zoning work is intended to to pick up everything else that we didn't include in the open space zone. Planning planning to get to work on that possibly this summer, but more likely the beginning of the fall, that work is going to roll into twenty twenty-five. So for the Planning Commission, I will just mention that we will need to likely need to redocket this work for twenty twenty-five. So the staff are handling all of that. I just wanted to make sure you understood how we ended up splitting the work. And the reality was with two separate zones and the amount of time that we needed to put into it, we were not, we were not going to be able to make this deadline. So. Okay, so that's, that's how the work got split. Next slide, please. As we were deciding to move towards an open space zone, the Open Space Conservancy Trust joined the Parks and Recreation Committee Commission, excuse me, and they ended up holding several joint meetings. I think they they met together three times, once in March and twice in April. And if any of you participated or watched those meetings, we literally went step by step, literally word by word almost through the new draft regulations. It was a really, I think it was a really good productive process. Next slide, please. So tonight you have in your packet a recommendation, and I wanted to explain that the the both boards voted independently on the recommendation. They voted on the regulations and they voted on the handoff memo that's in your packet. So your exhibits include the inventory of the open space land, the recommendation or the handoff memo, the zoning map, the development regulations and the land use map. Next slide, please. So I'm going to walk through just a handful of slides very briefly. But really what we wanted to do tonight is to have me stop talking and to turn the floor over for a dialogue between the Planning Commission and the Chairs of the Parks and Rec Commission and the Open Space Conservancy Trust. Chair Peter Struck is here from the Parks and Rec Commission and Chair Geraldine Poor is here from the Open Space Conservancy Trust. And before we go any further, I I want to thank both boards for dropping everything, scheduling extra meetings and and working through this process. I felt it was a great process. It was incredibly thorough, very thoughtful and really pleased with the product that we have in front of you tonight. All right, next slide, next slide. So as I've already mentioned, the recommendation in front of you is a proposed new zone that is specific to city-owned and managed open space lands, also known as open space properties, to ensure that these properties are managed and insured, suited consistently with our parks, Recreation and Open Space Plan, our code, all of our other plans, Pioneer Park specifically has quite a few planning documents that accompany it. So as we worked through the process, we were, we were referencing those plans and making sure that the recommendation was in alignment. Next slide, please. In your, I'm not going to go through this list, but just wanted to acknowledge that the list of open space lands was in your packet. One of the things that was discussed is in in our park system, we have parks that are like half park, half open space. Those were not included here yet. More time is needed to figure out what what to do with those properties that are essentially split. Part of the issue is it's not always, the open space isn't always on the edge of the park. Sometimes the open space is right in the middle of the park. So more work is needed on that. We just, we just tackled the properties that are truly open space. Next slide, please. The purpose statement, I won't read this. We spent a lot of time making sure this, the statement was was in alignment with the vision of both boards. And again, we cross referenced the documents that created the Open Space Trust and the Prose Plan to to establish this purpose statement. Next slide, please. Designation requirements, this new zone applies to properties that are specifically owned, leased or managed by the City of Mercer Island. And questions came up throughout the process, why aren't we including privately owned open space properties? First of all, that wasn't in scope. The public process did not involve any engagement with private property owners about the potential to rezone their properties. So we stuck with city-owned, city-owned lands. The managed by the City of Mercer Island language is in there for a couple of different reasons. Specifically though, Pioneer Park and Inkstrom Open Space are technically owned by the Trust, but managed by the city. So we wanted to make sure this, this designation requirement was written such that it it included all of the properties, even though the management scenarios are just a little bit different. I should say management and ownership scenarios are different. Should at some point, I want to mention that the City Council decide to expand the zone and and look at private properties. That is certainly something that the council could do. It just wasn't in the scope of work for right now. Next slide, please. The uses permitted and the next few slides is really where both boards spent the bulk of their time. I would say the uses permitted is a very narrow list by design, which aligns with the purpose of the open space, which is passive recreation and preservation. So that's how that list was developed. And again, I think both of our chairs are here to to answer questions about how we got here. Next slide, please. The development standards, we we really wrestled with these quite a bit. Again, I think we've landed on something that is both reflective of the vision of of both of the boards in alignment with your pros plan, your other planning documents, fairly restrictive, not a lot is allowed to happen in open space. And you'll see there's, there's a couple areas in in our, if you look at the list of open space properties, the standout property is Pioneer Park because it's so large. And so restrooms is a good example of of where we really felt. Okay, Pioneer Park is large enough. We have a honey bucket there now, but at some point there may be desire for a permanent restroom building. And that would make sense for a property of that size, but it doesn't necessarily make sense for our other much smaller open space properties. So here you can see that restrooms are permitted use for properties that are larger than a hundred acres and that that is specifically setting a line for Pioneer Park. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read through all these. I think you've gone through it. Signs and kiosks, we did a lot of fussing. Fussing and fussing to try to get this, these regulations aligned with what was currently happening in our parks. And here again, we we've, we know we need signage. We wanted to make sure that we didn't overwrite the current sign code, but added a few things to complement it. Just the feeling is less signs are more, even though we acknowledge they are needed. We addressed kiosks specifically. And again, that last bullet, it's just another reference to Pioneer Park. We do have a larger kiosk at Pioneer Park and we wanted to make sure that we had provisions that would allow for that to happen at our largest open space property. Trail standards. Pretty short list of things in your development regulations. We had an extensive presentation during one of the meetings on how trails are constructed in open space areas. And there's quite a bit of variability. We didn't feel it was appropriate for an open space zone to include those trail standards. That was a recommendation from the staff specifically. But we did feel it was appropriate to 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 set a width limitation, which is shown here as eight feet. That means if anyone's been to Pioneer Park recently, we have trails there that have become almost twenty feet wide. They're they're freeways. So that means those trails are non-conforming, but over time hopefully would be restored to to meet the narrower width. All right, next slide, please. And again, both of our chairs are here and they can, they can walk through, answer your questions as well. And then finally, we've added some definitions. Again, I won't read through these tonight. I think that's our last slide, Carson, so we can stop sharing. Next steps, I believe the Planning Commission is deliberating tonight. And we'll be meeting again next week to prepare a recommendation for the council. We're hoping to answer as many questions of yours tonight that we can. If there's something we can't answer, we are committing to putting together a short matrix and turning that around to you so that you have that information for your next meeting with one asterisk, anything that requires a whole bunch of legal research or analysis. I'm, I'm feeling that that timeline might be just a little too tight. But Carson, who's here with me tonight, his email address is on the screen, or you can just email Allison and she'll get the questions to Carson. He'll be supporting me on that work. As I already mentioned, we're hoping this is included and forwarded to the council and will be part of their their legislative review process this fall. There is a part two coming. That's the park zone development that will start in twenty twenty-four and it will finish next year. So with that, I think that is actually our last slide. I don't have anything else from the staff, but we are here tonight to support your discussion. And I will turn it back to you, Vice Chair Ragab. And I'll remind you, Peter Struck is here from the Parks Commission and Geraldine Poor is here from the Trust. Thank you for having us tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And yeah, we we had kind of a a get together of of the chairs and staff before beforehand, just to make sure we're all aligned on the goal of this meeting. And I think, I think the intent here is for us as the Planning Commission to look at it through a code lens as opposed to a policy lens that's been determined by these two other boards. And I think if there's any questions here by Commissioners to clarify the intent of anything in that code. Yeah, let's, let's take advantage of having our, our two other chairs here. And I think if possible, if we have any questions, let's direct it to to them. So with that, I'll say Commissioners, well, are there any questions? Commissioner Accuse?
Hi, thanks for recognizing me. I have three questions, but two of them are related. I'm wondering about, I'll start with mountain biking questions. We have a number of open space parks where mountain biking is currently allowed. And I know that there is some perception that that's a conflicting use with some of the other passive recreational uses. So my question is about, on the middle of page two, item E, trail standards, and then under, and relatedly, MICC nineteen sixteen ten definitions, passive recreational uses. So item E, trail standards says trails shall not exceed eight feet in width. And my current conception is that that would not accommodate the perceived conflict between mountain bikers and hikers where mountain biking is currently allowed. So I'm wondering if that eight feet in width is going to preclude mountain biking as a use? And then relatedly, under MICC nineteen sixteen ten passive recreational uses, I see that mountain biking is not listed as a passive recreational use. So I have one more question after this, but it's not related to that. That's my main question now, looking at these is, is this going to preclude mountain bike use? And I wanted to start by saying, I think you've done an excellent job and thank you so much for the effort here. I think this is a great both from city staff and Parks Commission to parse these two items out.
Do either of the chairs want to take that or do you want me to take that?
I'm happy. This is Peter Struck, Chair of the PRC. City manager, if you want to tell a little bit about biking, that would be great.
Sure. And the, let me work backwards. The definition passive recreational uses had about four or five versions while we were working through the review process. And where we finally landed, and then Peter or Jerry will correct me if I misspeak, is that it was, it was not practical to list every type of passive use. So originally there was a version, I think, that said that referenced bikes, you know, walking, everything. We stripped it out and instead just noted that it places minimal stress on a site's resources. So the question about biking was actually discussed and other uses were as well. Again, there, there's a hierarchy of regulations here. This is a zone. It's not precluding bicycles from being used, but each property needs to be evaluated for for individual operational decisions and rules, uses. We allow equestrians in some part of our open space system, but not others. It just became not practical to regulate those things in the zone. Those are going to have to be regulated as park rules. The trail width. I think the sentiment here, and this is where I'm going to look for, for the two chairs to maybe offer some additional comment, is that while many of our open space areas have evolved to have wider trails, Pioneer Park has a freeway system. That is not the intended use of open space. The vision would be over time, we would, we would be working to restore a much more narrow width. And we will have to evaluate where where we have, you know, an intensity of use, too much of one thing and regulate it in another way through policies, operational changes. So I will say the two boards felt pretty strongly about, you know, narrowing that width and the impact. And Jerry, Peter, anything else you'd like to add?
This is Peter Struck. Just to kind of elaborate on the city manager's comment. You know, we, we struggled with the number of these kind of, you know, passive slash active activities. And as Jesse mentioned, it just, it got to a point where we were kind of chasing our tails a little bit and just said, you know what? This is kind of an overarching document and that some of these issues are just going to have to be addressed on an individual park basis through park rules or or other means. Are we, you know, we probably still be talking about them today. So that's where, that's where we landed.
And I'll add a quick comment that in the handoff memo, there are a couple items, five items at the end, one of which is the use of bicycles. And we advised, requested, commented that the City Council should consider code or park policy updates to designate areas where this type of equipment may be used. So I think I would agree with Peter and City Manager Bond.
That is very helpful. Thank you. And I wonder if it doesn't make sense additionally to if, if, if this new zone doesn't already mention park rules? If it would say additional activities allowed with park rules? I think that would be helpful. And I'm thinking in terms of low impact uses, I frequently use Pioneer Park and the southeast quadrant, where you have off-leash, some off-leash dogs and mountain bikes, it seems to be the least impacted of all the quadrants. Whereas the quadrant in the northwest corner seems to have that freeway system going and there is no mountain bike use in there. So I, I think it's important that we address the perception and the actual impact of mountain bike use. Because where mountain bikers are, there does seem to be a lot less of that freeway action in in reality. I think it's more of a density of use leading to widening than any particular use. Adam, should I save my next questions? Tell others have had a chance to speak. I only have one more question. And I think it's a softball.
Let, let, let's knock that one out. Go, go for it.
Okay, it's just a quick, like, in terms of addressing designated, designation of natural areas and mixed-use parks with similar restrictions as found in this open space zone, Jesse, I think I heard you say that will be handled in the next docket. Is staff or Parks Commission planning to do that? Or is that, or are Parks Commission planning to do that? Or is that something you would want the Planning Commission to put on the docket?
We're, we're going, well, the process won't exactly look like it just did because we, we got creative in working this zone. But the next part two will again go through the Parks and Recreation Commission. And they will hand it off to you as, as well. So it, it still will go through a legislative review with the Planning Commission and then to council, but we'll start it back at the Parks and Rec Commission. And as you know, the next zone is going to be tricky. The, the issues that we flagged a couple months ago, we haven't, we haven't wrestled to the ground just yet.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And again, excellent effort and I appreciate what you've done here.
All right, I think the next hand I saw was Commissioner Rashish.
Thanks. So when when City Manager Bond, when you were talking, you talked about some of these properties that were excluded because they were part park and part open space. At least that's the way I read it. And so I'm wondering if you could just enumerate which one, which of the, which of the properties that includes? I assume that includes Island Park and Homestead Field, but I'm wondering if there's anything else? And that's part one of my question, then I got to follow up on that.
Yes, there's, there's actually a long list and I, I don't have it pulled up right now. But I can click and talk. So Island Crest Park is, is actually one of the more, in terms of where the open space lies, it's a little more straightforward because it's, it's on one part of the park. What, what we need to think about is those, those parcels. And and I think you all will know where I'm headed with this is split zones on a single parcel are, are, are challenging to regulate. So we need to evaluate that. I think one of the questions we'll ask is do you subdivide the property and and split the open space off? You know, I, I think there's a number of ways we could deal with that. That is the more straightforward situation. Luther Burbank is a different animal. The open space kind of meanders within that park. So splitting it off and zoning it separately is likely not practical. Let's see, I'm not finding my list as quickly as I had hoped, but I can keep flipping here. I want to say there's five or six parks. Merciedale Park is another one that has open space areas. What am I missing? Anyway, there we go. Thank you. So what you're looking at here, this is from the Prose Plan. This is park inventory. And let's see, is this Merrill? Are you the one screen sharing?
Carson.
Oh, Carson, thank you. If, if it's a little hard to see, but, but Clark Beach, Groveland, Homestead, Island Crest, Merciedale, that all have those little asterisks next to them, Wildwood, Secret Park are what, what I would traditionally classify as a park that also includes open space areas.
And, and so, and I noticed on the map that Wildwood, while on, on this list, it looks like it's a split. On the map that was in the packet, it says it is being changed from open space to park. So why is that one being addressed?
It's actually classified in the Prose Plan as a park. So we were treating it as such.
Okay, it's the map I'm looking at says Mr. Island proposed, and it says change from open space to park for Wildwood Park.
Let me, let me pull up the map here. I will. Sorry. All right. Yes, Wildwood is, I believe in the Prose Plan that Carson just pulled up is, is considered a park and it has active uses like a park. I would say that's, that's not a foregone conclusion. Commissioner Reese sees that it needs to stay park or open space, but it was certainly one that we felt needed further evaluation. Open space designation possibly precludes some of the active type things that are happening there.
Jesse, this, sorry to interrupt you. This is Sorry to interrupt you. This is Merrill. For some reason, I can't share my video at the moment, but I have, I just wanted to jump in about Wildwood quickly. I spoke to Sam Harb, our Parks Manager, and, um, Tom Flynn, our Parks Foreman, and um, in terms of Wildwood, what I was told was the maintenance practices there are more in line with parks. There you go. Uh, they're more in line with how they maintain parks as opposed to open spaces, and the addition of, um, utilities that run through that space or near that space is also, um, is the reason why the maintenance practices are more in line with parks as opposed to open space. So this was sort of why we decided that's the correct move for land use in that space.
It's sort of, what I wanna add to that is what I was just starting to say a moment ago is, uh, on the timeline that we had, there were properties that clearly prolonged in the open space zone, and there are others that need further review, consideration, and study. It doesn't mean that Wildwood won't eventually be classified as open space and zone that way. But we needed to do more, more work. And we didn't wanna make rushed recommendations. Parks Commission really needs some time to dig into these properties. So I hope that answers your question. I personally think Wildwood can swing either direction. And it's, it's been classified different, if you look at the history of all of our documents, it goes back and forth. Um, if the planning commission has a recommendation, I should have said this earlier. There's something you see in the work, something you want us to really make sure we take a look at in phase two. Um, I shared this with the vice chair when I met with him earlier today. Um, I incl- include, encourage you to include that in your recommendation to the council. And the Parks and Rec Commission and the Trust did something similar in their handoff memo to you. Uh, they said, hey, these things aren't, aren't in the, the development regulations, but we wanna call your attention to the city council and, uh, make sure you know it's important to us.
So, one final question on that. So we, we have a proposal for open space. We're moving into a parks discussion. Can you just tell me how the what the mechanics of these parks that are split between open space and parks? Where is that gonna be handled and how's that gonna be handled?
I'm not sure yet. Um, we have not, we know, we know there's an issue. We know it needs to be evaluated, but we haven't started that evaluation yet, Commissioner. Um, what I wanna start with is, uh, is legal to just get some advice on split zones, so that the Parks and Rec Commission can understand when a, a parcel has two zoning designations right up the middle, which would be the scenario. Well, it's not quite right up the middle with Island Crest Park, but you know what I mean? It's, it's challenging for the regulators, our own planning department, so we, we need to look at that.
So it'll come, we, do we think it'll come after the parks?
I, I, I'm, I'm gonna, my hope, my hope is that it will all be part of part two and the parks on discussion. Yeah, that, yeah, what, what I, I don't wanna leave, um, work undone in phase two. So we know going into this phase two, we have some challenging discussions around buildings and pervious surface, parking, uh, the matter we're talking about right now. Uh, I don't wanna have a phase three. We, we wanna get all these properties into one of the two zones and get uh, the appropriate regulations, um, corresponding to each property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bo- Boatsman?
Yes, that, thank you. This, this is a great packet. It's, it's wonderful proposal, I should say. Um, a couple of questions I have, um, are these open space properties going to, i- is it likely that they will ever be moved into the open space Conservancy Trust? Has that been discussed?
Uh, I, I can take a stab at that. Uh, the, the pros plan identified, uh, that as a potential work item. Uh, it came up a couple of times during discussion between the two boards. Uh, I would say there is not agreement, uh, even amongst the two boards on whether or not that is the right thing to do. Uh, and the, the council hasn't directed that that be evaluated. So is it a possibility in the future? Uh, yes. I think from an operational perspective, one of the things that we're keeping an eye on is in our park system and our open space system, many of these properties, um, uh, also double as utilities, right? You've, you've heard me talk about this before. Uh, so there's there's some operational considerations that, that need to be, be looked at. So I think the answer is maybe that will happen. It was definitely identified as a policy. Um, excuse me, an objective in the pros plan. But there hasn't, uh, been direction. There we go. Um, that, right under our, Carson, you're doing a great job, screen sharing, uh, future policies, uh, and it, it flags right there, um, that transfer to the open space Conservancy Trust is one consideration. Thanks, Carson.
I suppose I, I mention it because there seem to be a lot of people in the community that want some higher level of protection. So I just thought that, that, you know, maybe that's a way to, uh, address some of that energy coming from folks that they want something like, that's, that's why I ask, but, um, okay, and then additional question. Um, what is an exterior lighted sign? I noticed that's something that's, I think, not allowed. What is that?
Those are the signs that, that literally set on the perimeter of the open space properties.
Okay, so it's on the edge, but it's lighted. That's all it means. Okay, thanks. So those are prohibited. Um, and then, uh, again, back to trails again, trail standards, um. So I'm thinking, you know, looking at the, the, the uses of these, these parks, the, these open spaces. Typically, you know, it's passive, so we're talking walking, and if you're a kid, maybe running and, um, if you're trying to observe wildlife, um, you know, you need to be quiet. So I'm wondering what's the potential that in open spaces, all the trails would tend to be uh, made of materials that enable you to be quiet as opposed to gravel, for example?
We had a, uh, we had a fun presentation on, uh, trail standards as part of this process. It was, I don't know, about thirty slides, uh, describing all the different ways we construct and build uh, trails in our open space areas. It was so much that that was the presentation that confirmed we could not write detailed trail standards in the zone. Um, surfacing, I, I'm not the trail builder in the city. We have experts that do that. There are different reasons for different surfaces. I would not recommend precluding gravel. Uh, we need it for other reasons like drainage and also compacted gravel for accessibility. What I shared with the boards previously is we are a little over a year, year and a half away from starting the update on the city's, um, pedestrian and bike plan. And that plan is where the trail standards belong. That, that is where they need to live. We currently have standards for how we build, um, uh, standalone trails, basically right-of-way trails or stairs, but we don't have standards for trails elsewhere. And the trail standards we currently have are pretty limited. So my recommendation is that when that plan gets updated, that's, that's where we should build out the standards, and that is where we should talk about surfacing for for operational reasons, for safety, for accessibility, and for what you just mentioned, even noise and other factors.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there can be, you know, some way of parsing it out so that it protects the values that are needed in a certain place.
Uh, and it looks like, uh, Chair Struck unmuted, so I didn't mean to steal your thunder, but
Gonna say to Commissioner Bothman, I mean, I, I think there was a number of people on the, on the two commissions or, or boards that expressed some of the things that you just said. And I think after, as the city manager just mentioned, after we went through that, uh, lengthy slide presentation with all the different things that, uh, the staff come up with in terms of, uh, maintaining that safe word, we kind of, I don't, I don't say threw up our hands, but just said that we really can't legislate this. We gotta, you know, depend on the, uh, quote-unquote, experts, uh, on a situation by situation, but I think, you know, the message was sent, uh, you know, loud and clear that clearly, you know, uh, the appropriate materials are, are, are the right thing to do, but exactly where they are in any particular situation, it's, it's hard to to determine, uh, you know, a priority. So, but I think we were, we were spot on with you.
Thank you. I, I suppose what I was thinking of, it had some interest in a policy that was not really specifying materials, but was talking about what sort of values were trying to be protected in, in, you know, in, in choosing standards or, or something, something more like that. But, um, either way, I think you're gonna solve it, so I'm comfortable with that. Um, I have another question about setbacks. So given the things that are exempt from setbacks, I got to thinking, well, what sort of thing would not be exempt from setback? You know, what, what sort of thing would actually need to be twenty feet from a residential property? Um, restrooms, but I guess there's only gonna be one of those. Anything else?
That's, that's a good, that's a good, uh, in- inverse, uh, way of looking at it. I, I appreciate that. Uh, at the risk of stating the obvious, there's very little developed in open space zones, um. So, uh, we've, we've, we went out and took pictures and, um, looked at things. I'm, there's likely some infrastructure that I'm not thinking of that needs to be set back from the right-of-way. Merrill, do you have any thoughts on that, or Carson?
I don't, off the top of my head, Jesse, but happy to take another poll, poll around the island and speak to the Parks Manager about, you know, where that kind of came from for us.
No worries. I just couldn't quite picture it. You know, maybe there's some sort of a structure for storing tools or, or something like that. I, I, I don't know, but if it, if it doesn't come right to mind, uh, it seems to me like a good protection to have, cuz you might need to build something, and so you've got the setback. But then that concludes my questions. Thank you.
And I do wanna follow up on that real quick too, and, and maybe Jerry can, can talk about, uh, this a little bit more. Uh, what we, when we looked at how our open space areas are currently developed, um, one might think, you know, ideally you pull the trails off the property line, and, and if it's possible to do that, sure, but we're also, uh, our goal is preservation, restoration, protection. And so that, that has a competing interest, right? It pushes everything to the outside so that you can preserve the ecological function of these properties in a meaningful way. And when we start crossing them all up with trails, so what we observed is many of our trails actually sit right on the property lines, and we went back and forth. So your point is an interesting one. Um, I'll need to go back and look at the list, and we, we can put that on our, um, items to follow up if, if, is anything actually truly governed by the setbacks. Um, it may be the case that we exempted everything and didn't realize it.
Well, I really appreciate what you've said about the trails being on the property line, because you know, birds, for example, that, you know, as soon as you start dividing up the forest with trails and this and that, they give up on that location for habitat. They don't build their nest there. And if you have trails, for example, that are twenty feet from the property line, surrounding an entire really large parcel, that's a lot of, a lot of land that has been reduced in terms of habitat value. So I like the idea of, of, of keeping them on the outside if you possibly can. So, thank you.
All right, um, I think all commissioners have asked question, uh, Commissioner Bataso, do you, I don't see a hand, but do you have any questions that you'd like? Um, I've, yes, and Commissioner Bozeman, your hand is now, that's an old one. Just to, just to, okay, um, I've got two questions and possibly a third. Um, so I see the definition of temporary use. I recall in some earlier meetings that Adam Zach had articulated that from a you know, entire city point of view, temporary use is traditionally less than that hundred and eighty days, six months. Um, was, were there any discussions in either of the two other, uh, commissions about perhaps having like an, uh, open space or parks slash open space temporary use of shorter duration than six months?
I can tell you why we landed on a hundred and day, eighty days, if that's
Okay, sure, yeah, yeah. I, I, I'd like to know the, yeah, the path to it.
Uh, under the temporary use provision for an open space, it often includes construction. Uh, that may not, may not be the, the case for parks, but because we don't have any structures in open space areas, and we often are staging equipment or tents. And the construction, it can range from trail construction where we are bringing in heavy machinery to restoration activities, where we're staging plants and tools and things. Uh, many of our projects span that hundred and eighty day length. Uh, many don't, but that was the primary reason. Uh, otherwise, a temporary use is more consistent with what you're probably thinking of, like, it's a, it's a it's a special event, and, and we don't do events in open spaces like, like summer celebration. Um, but we might have, more often, we have, um, school groups come out and, and do a, a special day where we might allow a temporary use of a tent or something like that. So it runs the gamut. Temporary uses run all the way from, you know, kids doing a nature walk, uh, to a construction activity that, that might actually span months.
Okay, no, th- thank you, that, yeah, that articulating that construction part and that it, yeah, was more than just simply copy pasted from a def- and so that, that helps under alleviate my uh, question. Um, on the topic of wireless communications facilities from perusing the code, it's my understanding that there's, you know, micro and macro. Micro ha- have to be allowed everywhere, and that's, that's FCC rules. Um, were there any discussions, and I, and I see in the recommendations that, you know, as the intent is to make these the last place possible. Was, were there any discussions or intent to, if, if it is legal to prohibit macro facilities or any additional macro facilities? W- w- was that discussed at all in the, for the parks? I think we have one in Island Crest part, but yeah, w- was there, is there any intent to prohibit if legal, the large ones?
I will take a stab, and then I'll look to the chairs to share, um, a little bit more about the discussion. Uh, I think absolutely both boards, uh, wanted to minimize, um, not, not just telecommunications facilities, but additional utility infrastructure, anything that would take away from the purpose of, of the open space areas. With telecommunications specifically, we ran into the problem of, uh, this code basically conflicting with what's in our telecommunications code. And we didn't wanna recommend, we didn't wanna create a conflict. The compromise position was uh, both boards felt strongly that the council needed to look at this the next time they update their telecommunications code. And I would ask the planning commission if you feel strongly that open space areas need to be, you know, looked at and, and a modification that you include that in your recommendation to the council as well. Uh, but revising the telecommunications code, uh, was outside of the scope. And frankly, not within the timeline that we had, had, had with, with which to work. I will also say the staff, um, also support this recommendation and, you know, when we're, when we're working on citing these facilities with the various vendors, my two cents is, uh, they should be cited in the right-of-way. Uh, you know, if, if, if an area adjacent to the open space is geographically the only place where we can get signal for an antenna for whatever need, uh, it still doesn't make much sense to the staff that we would compromise the open space for that antenna. There's gotta be another solution. Uh, but that was probably more than you wanted to know, but I, I think we're all in agreement that that telecommunications code should be looked at. Uh, open space areas at the lowest priority, and perha- perhaps even if it's within our authority to prohibit certain types of facilities. And, and we had, we talked about this a lot, so I would definitely, I, I will stop talking and say, Jerry and Peter, do you have something you'd like to add?
I, I can chime in first to say your, uh, summary was very appropriate, and it is the uh, third of the, um, handoff memo. Uh, the additional recommendations in the handoff memo. And specifically to what the vice chair was asking, I, I don't remember the distinction between macro and micro um, as being different ways of approaching it, but we did ask that it be considered further.
And, and I will just And, and I will just second, uh, what Jerry said that, uh, you know, we're, it kind of landed where the council allows, said that we should go.
Thanks. That, that helps me better understand, yeah, the delay of the land and the intent. Thank you. Do we have follow on questions or comments? Uh, Commissioner Bataso?
Um, I just have a couple of comments, I think mostly for my, um, fellow planning commissioner friends. Um, first, I want to acknowledge, um, open space and Parks Commission Chairs. Thank you for coming to talk to us. Thanks for dealing with the added work we threw back at you. Um, just listening and looking at what's happening, I recognize that it's a lot more work that was requested of everyone. Um, I also want to acknowledge that we have two qualified commissions who are working very specifically on those particular zones. So both the open space and park zones um, are very clearly run by and staffed by people who know how to manage these types of zones and properties. Um, it's with that in mind and also some of this ongoing conversation around reconstituting planning commission, that I think one of the things I want to just check in with my planning commission friends as we look to review this and provide comment or feedback. Um, I will just say, I'm not seeing anything that needs a lot of comment. Um, and I think that's one of the things that we're getting feedback on as a commission about making sure that we're kind of staying in our lane where it makes sense. Um, and I know for me as a commissioner, I don't really want to have to vote on editorial comments like periods or quotations or commas. No offense, I'm just saying. You know, where we don't have edits that make substantive changes to zones or policies, I just want to encourage us not to do it. Um. I know we just have a tendency. I, I will be the first to admit I did it in the econ dev portion. I haven't done it since. Bad kitty, no catnip. Um, but I do notice that, you know, where we get editorial, uh, in the zones and we do tend to come, um, create complexity. Uh, I want to encourage us, like I'm seeing a really good product here where we don't need to change what's good. I, I want to encourage us to really think about um, what, what do we need to comment on? Um, and also just want to make sure I'm clear about process. So comments are due next week. And then we come back to deliberate on anything we might have chimed in on. Um, and then it's next week that we actually take action on referring this to council. Is that accurate? Head nod works. Okay, great. I see Jesse and Allison both nodding. Um. I also want to acknowledge, I could kind of hear it in some of, uh, Commissioner Race's questions. There's some outstanding questions, like how are we going to deal with some properties? Uh, I can feel that tension too, as a commissioner, like, oh, are we going to move this piece forward and not have answers in the other piece? Um, and I see why it's necessary to do that. So we can start managing and working on these properties in these zones specifically. Um, so I can see why we need to take this piece, move it forward and then deal with parks and whatever tiering may or may not happen with that and those companion spaces that go along with our park zone. Um, so just sort of a plus one, yes. Uh, thanks, Jesse, for acknowledging that's round two and hopefully just two and not two and three. Um. So that's really all I want to share.
All right. Thank you for, yeah, thank you for your comments. Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Well, I think then with that, I think we will now move on to other business. Um. Yeah. Thank you once again, um, Parks and Rec and OSCT Chair and additional members of city staff and I guess, yeah, let's start with the deputy director report from Allison.
Thank you. Um, I'll just be really brief. I wanted to just kind of go over the upcoming schedule really quickly. Um, like we were just saying, we're asking that you provide any comments or proposed amendments or questions in writing by Monday at nine AM. Um, those are going to be assembled into a matrix for review at the meeting on next Wednesday, uh, the fifteenth. And we're looking to take action on the open space zone, um, at that meeting, the fifteenth. Um, then on May twenty second, we're going to be bringing you a summary of the results from the comp plan open house as well as the online survey. We're also going to be bringing, um, a consultant report with a consistency analysis. So we've had a consultant working for the last several weeks looking at all of the state, regional and county requirements for the comp plan update and cross checking to make sure that we have met every single one of those requirements. And then also looking at internal consistency between each element and appendix to make sure that everything is not, there's no conflicts between any of the elements and policies. Um, so we'll be bringing a summary of all of that analysis and some recommendations on potential further amendments based on any gaps that are identified there. Um, so that'll all be coming back, like I said, on the twenty second. We're not expecting you to take action on, on the twenty second. It's just kind of an information dump. We then have the public hearing on the twenty ninth where you can hear again from the public in a more formal setting um, and receive comments on the overall draft plan. Um. Kind of the, the combination of those two pieces, the summary, the consistency analysis and the public hearing should give you everything you need to consider any further amendments that you may want to propose. And those can be brought forward then at the June fifth meeting. Um, we're still working out the details of the exact process. I think we'll probably have a period where you can send stuff in and writing in advance. Um, and then June fifth and June twelfth will be the meetings where we consider any final amendments to the plan and we're hoping to have your final recommendation at that June twelfth meeting. So, does anyone have questions about that process? Does that make sense? Okay, um, that's all I've got for now. Just wanted to give you that high level flyover so everyone's on the same page. And we're going to be moving fast the next few weeks, but I think it's all do, it's all pretty manageable. We've kind of broken everything out into bite sized steps. Commissioner Bataso?
Just real quickly, are commissioners expected to attend the public hearing to listen?
Yes, it'll be part of our regular meeting that evening. Um, and, you know, it'll be online, just like how we've been doing all of our meetings. But anyone who registers in advance to speak will have their three minutes. It, it works just like how we do public appearances in our normal meetings, but it'll be a little more formal.
Thank you.
All right, um, second item of other business. Are there any planned absences for future meetings that people wish to announce here? Hey, well, seeing none, I think we, um, can move to adjournment unless there are any other general questions or comments from commissioners. All right, we're going to get out of here quite early. So commissioners, um, as, uh, Deputy Director Allison or Deputy Director Van Gorp mentioned, um, the next special meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May fifteenth at six PM. Uh, there being no other business to come before the planning commission, the time is now seven oh one PM and the meeting is adjourned. As a reminder to commissioners, please stay seated until city staff has terminated, terminated the broadcast. Good evening and thank you for joining us.